Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is Port County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, August 10th, little past 10 o'clock. Move right into the consent agenda, Melanie?
Approval of payroll, July 23rd and August 6th, 2021. Approval of claims, July 15th, July 22nd, July 29th, August 5th of 2021. Approval of minutes, July 13th, 2021. Treasurers monthly report, June 30th and July 30th filed.
Okay, then artistic services agreement, Commissioner Blaney?
We've got Sharon Shepherd, Michael Glorioso, Miley Oroz, Gillian Michalak, Jordan Rammersberger, Eric Kratz, Justin Anderson, and Kevin Dish. All Memorial Opera House artistic services agreements.
Okay, so that's the consent agenda, wanna throw it to the board for action?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have a citizen's appointment to the Airport Advisory Board. We advertised the opening and we had one respondent, and the respondent is Paul Shale, who is currently on the board and I believe is the treasurer of the board. So that's the one appointment that we do have, that we've taken in. So throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve, Paul Shale has our citizen appointment to the Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, this is commissioners' business. We have a school board appointment to the RDC. And I believe the school board appointment is Andy Miletta, who is coming from the Portage School Corporation. And so he would be, this member does not vote, but they are on the board to discuss school, public education, school issues on the RDC board. So that's who we'd be putting forward for the board appointment to the RDC. And I'll throw it to the board for action.
Motion to appoint Andy Miletta as the school board appointment to the county RDC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Andy Miletta being appointed to the Regional Redevelopment Corporation of Porter County. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, Pulse Technology. This is an annual maintenance agreement for the mail machine and scale at the Valpo courthouse in the amount of $1,060. And I'll throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Pulse Technology. Annual maintenance agreement and mail machine and scale at the courthouse. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an employee's request for insurance coverage. And I think we're doing this because we're out of enrollment. Is that correct? So we have a person that's wanting to get on the insurance with enrollment being closed. So it takes this board to make that happen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an employee's request for insurance coverage. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we got Skilman Corporation. We're going to receive and open bids for the Memorial Opera House. I'd just like to point out that this is only for the brickwork on the outside of the building. This is not numbers for the entire project. This is just for the bid package of exterior masonry. We wanted to get out into the market to see what the numbers are like out there. And if the council and this board would come together to move forward, this would be something that could possibly be done before winter starts. But we're just out getting numbers right now for the exterior masonry work on the Memorial Opera House. And I think we have...
Four bids.
Four bids. First bid is Burgland Construction out of Chesterton. And this bid is $165,000.
Commissioner Good, if I may?
Yeah.
There's two alternates in there.
Okay. You wanna, yeah.
Or I can read them.
Yeah, please go ahead and read them. Are they on the third page or the...?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
So I picked the second.
Yes, okay, so for Burgland, as Commissioner Good stated, base bid $165,000. Alternate number one is an add $7,000. Alternate number two, $12,500.
Okay, next one up is Bully and Andrews Masonry Restoration. And their base bid is $249,735. Two forty-nine, seven thirty-five. We have the first alternate for clear water repellent coating is an add of $4,800. And we have the second alternative for the water repellent coating is $19,000 add. So again, the base bid, two forty-nine, seven thirty-five. Alternate one, $4,800 add. Alternate two, $19,000 add.
Alternative one is the clear water repellent coating. And the alternative two is the pigmented water repellent coating.
Next up is Gareet Construction. The base bid is $229,750. Two twenty-nine, seven fifty. And the add number, alternate one for the clear water repellent coating is $7,000. And the add for the pigmented water color is $18,750. Next quote is from Midwest Pressure Washing and Restoration Inc., DBA Restore Works Masonry Restoration. Their price is $106,792. $106,792. And the adds, alternate one for clear water repellent coating is $6,276.47. And the add for the pigmented water repellent coating is $24,012.35.
Just received another bid at 10:04.
Open it.
It's a late bid.
Okay, this quote is from Union Contracting. And their quote is $426,890. And add one is for clear coating is $81,810. And for the pigmented water repellent coating is $119,255 add. I think that's it. Right? So now Skilman will take those numbers under advisement and report back.
Yes, sir.
That's our probably maybe next meeting.
The August 24th?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Sheriff Reynolds, we got Latinsky Auctioneers LLC. Morning Gary.
Morning.
Morning Chief. This is for your auction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you have a contract? You got 12 county vehicles?
Correct.
Okay.
I think total 13 actually. Twelve from county and weight to measure as it falls.
Okay. Okay. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Latinsky Auctioneers for a contract for the sale of personal property at a public auction pertaining to 12 county, 13 county vehicles. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
John Snyder, assessor. Morning, John. What do you got, John?
We have here the need for some representation for some big box appeals that are rolling through at the Indiana Board of Tax Review. So we just need some assistance in helping get those through. This nexus has been successful in the last two or three years in getting some of these through in other counties and being successful for the county. So they have good track record and we ask that we could be able to utilize their services for our office.
Is this just for this year, John, or the next year?
I think this will carry on in the next two or three years.
Okay.
These are open tax appeals?
Yes, these are big box, very sophisticated appeals that have been going on for some time.
And as we're wrapping our arms around more things, this is an important part because at some point if they do are successful on their appeal and there is a refund assuming they actually paid the tax. And so it's part of the wheel in the budgeting world and things like that. So it is important that more attention is on realizing what could be coming down the road as far as the tax appeals.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Nexus Group. Contract for professional property tax services for the assessor's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, John. Animal Shelter, we got Enterprise Fleet Management. Morning.
Good morning.
So this is for two leases for two Ford Transits for the fleet for the shelter?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Next up, Memorial Opera House, Scott McDonald. Here's Scott.
We're flying again.
We are, we are, for our production of nine to five.
Oh, I didn't know anybody flew in that one.
Yeah, Franklin Hart, our bad guy, he gets flown up in basically a garage door motor. But in order to make it safe and keep everybody alive, we want to go ahead and use ZFX again. We had really great success with them for Mary Poppins. We're excited to work with them again.
Okay, to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for ZFX Flying FX for the Memorial Opera House show. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of the National Endowment of Arts and American Rescue Plan funds for the Porter County Memorial Opera House. This is first reading. So what we're gonna do is pause the commissioners' meeting and we're gonna open up a public hearing. And we're gonna give the opportunity to come forward to speak in favor or against creating this fund. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against creating this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? And with that, the public hearing is closed. We will now throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of the National Endowment of Arts and American Rescue Plan funds for the Porter County Memorial Opera House. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. We got another one here too. We got another ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the receipt of shuttered venues operators grant fund for the Porter County Memorial Opera House. So again, we'll do the same thing. We're gonna close, pause the commissioners' meeting and open a public hearing. And anybody wishing to come forward to speak against creating this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against creating this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this fund? And with that, the public hearing is closed. And we're back to the commissioners' meeting for the board to take action on first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carried on first reading. That'll be on the agenda for the next commissioners' meeting for second reading.
And we'll be bringing that also in front of the council to fund it. So we should have all the additional and all of that as well to get that all cleaned up.
Okay, thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good day.
Thanks, you too.
Hey Bob. So first up here, we have a rezoning map amendment. This is Brink across from RR Rural Residential to P1 Parks and Recreation. And the petitioner is the Porter County Parks Department. This is second reading. Throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have a rezoning map amendment for Hawks Ridge from RR Rural Residential to P1 Parks and Recreation. The petitioner again is the Porter County Parks Department. And this is second reading. So throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for rezoning map amendment for Hawk Ridge from Rural Residential to P1 Parks and Recreation. Second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And next up is a rezoning map amendment. This is for Trail Yard from I-1 Light Industrial to CM Moderate Intensity Commercial. And the petitioner is Clifford Road LLC. This is second reading as well.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, on second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then we, next up, we have the awards for the subdivision paving project.
Mike's got this information. Yeah, so as you will recall, we opened bids for this project at the last meeting, July 13th bid opening. Since then, our staff has been in coordination with the lowest apparent bidder, Reith Riley. And at this point, a few minor errors with the submission in terms of the total aggregate price have been resolved. Staff is recommending award of this contract to Reith Riley, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of $3,197,926.35.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Glad we're moving ahead on this.
Yeah.
This is long overdue.
Yeah.
Much needed.
Yep.
I'm moved to approve the Reith Riley contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to Reith Riley for the award of the bid for the subdivision paving project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, guys. Welcome back, Bob. Next up, Valpo Events. This is a request to use the courthouse grounds for the 42nd Annual Popcorn Festival. You can read everything up there on the board for what their request is. And this is something that's been done every year since the popcorn festival's been going on. So I'd like to throw it to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Valpo Events, a request to use the courthouse grounds for the popcorn festival Saturday, September 11th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And now we've come to the end of our meeting. Is there anybody wishing to address this board? Come forward.
Hello, my name is Sarah Miller. I am at 479 East Furnace Road, Michigan City, Indiana, 46360. And I spoke at the last meeting. And in the art of brevity, I will try to keep this very short. Last meeting, I spoke of the buffer zone between a P1 zoning and a rural residential. And I was informed that I misunderstood the details and that rural residential were not going to be responsible to create any kind of a buffer zone. The newest property coming in, or the park in this case, would bear that responsibility. That sounds great, I love it. I also received a call after this meeting from a neighbor and I met with her. She wasn't able to attend this meeting. She told me her story and is, just to briefly touch on that, her land resides next to Brinko in an older section zoned P1. She is zoned rural residential. The park came in, constructed trails on her property. And she confronted them and said, wait a minute, you're building your trails on my property. And they said, well, we got a survey, we're okay, we're right, you're wrong. So she went ahead and she did the responsible thing. She hired a surveyor. They came in, they surveyed the property. And they said, oh, the Brinko did put trails across your property. They crossed the lines a few places here. So she took that survey and said, they crossed the property lines, trails are on my property. I would like them removed. Brinko said no. They said, we have these trails, we want to keep them here. So she did the responsible thing, she hired a lawyer. She then had this lawyer argue for her. And Brinko has a lawyer on staff, the Parks Department has a lawyer. So they're not out any money when this happens. If there's a dispute, one of the things that I was told is I'm kind of an odd duck that I'm fighting a park getting park zoning, who wouldn't want a park next to their land. I talked to a lot of neighbors, door to door. And honestly, I got about 20, 25 neighbors that are adamantly opposed to what the park is doing because of things that have happened. I found one neighbor that is in love with the park. Those are pretty big numbers. Anyway, long story short, they worked out between the lawyers, something that they could agree upon. Was my neighbor happy? No. They worked it out, it's now settled. She has those same original trails on her property. She lost that land, it's gone. She has other land to make up for it, again, they worked it out. But here's the issue. We as neighbors keep being told that the park made a mistake. It was an innocent mistake, oops, somebody put the trail on. Well, they told them they had a survey, that was a lie. And that's he said, she said, doesn't matter. But we're told it's an innocent mistake and it happened. My neighbor paid the consequences. We're told with this zoning change, it's an innocent mistake, you know, oops, they should have done this this way, they didn't do it right, so sorry. But the park got what they wanted. The park got the zoning change here. You guys voted it in and that's how life works sometimes. What is the consequence for the park doing things backwards? They're first getting the land, using it the way they want, and then zoning it to match what they're using it for. That's not allowed by any private individual. That would not be allowed by any person out there in the audience today. But it is being granted to the park and it's being granted multiple times. You can make an innocent mistake once. I believe in maybe twice you could make this mistake and say it was an innocent mistake, oops. Three, four, five times? What consequences are we going to give to assure that the park starts actually following the rules that are set out? Because multiple times now, as neighbors, we are seeing they are not following the rules. And when we try to fight, we pay the lawyer fees, we pay the survey fees. Our families are suffering financially. And the park has these people on staff. They're not, no one's taking a hit to their family medical budget or their fun entertainment budget to fight these battles. We as neighbors are fighting against a government and that's a very hard thing to do. So in the future, for future zoning changes, if this comes before this board again, I will be here. But please consider, we can make a mistake once or twice and that's innocent. Multiple times, it's methodical. And they're getting what they want and I don't want to see that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, come on up here, give your name, your address. Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
My name is Cheryl Roberts. Do you want my address?
Sure.
I live at 136 Johnson Drive in Valparaiso. I myself and the whole vet row, we are all former employees of Porter County Animal Shelter. And we are here to discuss the future of Director Toni Bianchi.
Okay.
We have been silent long enough. We do not want to see the abuse anymore that she puts employees through, the public, the animals. We lived through it for years. This woman is evil. She's mean, she's abusive, she's a bully, she intimidates people. We have been silent long enough, no one will listen to us. We are all here today. We are going to fight for the animals, for the past, present, and future employees of the shelter. She bullies, she damages county property with her two-year-old tantrums, screams and yells at us, calls us names. We tolerated it for years, okay? My finger was bit off by a dog in December. Two weeks ago, I had my fourth surgery. One of my doctors would not release me back to work, Toni fired me. No call, no face to face. I received a letter a week later that I was terminated on May 6th. Would anyone else like to come up and speak, do you have anything to say?
Hello, my name's Clarissa Samahan. I am at 707 South Second Street, Chesterton, Indiana. I also work alongside of all of our kennel staff and our very brave vet tech who assisted us at Porter County Animal Shelter. Although I wasn't working as long as Cheryl did alongside all the rest of the kennel staff, I did work there for about nine months, starting last year around August, the beginning 2019 August. And I ended around April of 2020 when COVID just hit its peak. There was multiple exams... There was multiple examples of Toni running out of the shelter screaming at clients of people that just wanted to bring in a stray dog. One incident, I was working as a receptionist at the time, because I was part-time receptionist and part-time dog handler. A woman that actually worked alongside my mother as a hospice nurse was on her way to work and she found a dog on the side of the Portage Highway. She took it upon herself to call the Portage Department Police and they had said, "Well, if you're already on your way to Porter County, normally we have our dogs go there. So how about you stop at Porter County Animal Shelter and Toni would be happy to help you?" As this woman came in saying, "I was going to be late for work and I would just like to have, help this dog I found on the side of the road," Toni then refused her and said, "We do not take in any dogs from Portage." The woman then said, "I called the Portage Police Department and they sent me here." Toni then said, "We will not take your dog, how do I not know it's yours?" And she said, "Well, I'm on the way to work and I, I don't want to be late or be fired." She then refused the woman again with this dog and the woman, out of frustration, said, "Well, I should have just left the dog on the highway." And as Toni heard that, she ran outside screaming at this woman, saying, "If you put this dog back on the side of the highway, I will have you arrested." And then did nothing about it as the woman drove off in tears. She was then fired because she just wanted to help a dog on the side of the highway. There has been many, many more accounts of times that have shown abuse, lies, tamper tantrums, especially for Toni. And one of her quotes that I like to say is, "If I can't yell or scream in my shelter, then no one's going to listen to me, and if I instill fear in you, then you'll just do your job." There has been multiple other times. My favorite story is, one time I took it upon myself to adopt a hospice senior that had come in. She obviously was not going to make it out of the shelter, so I decided to give her a home. She sadly only lived with me for about six months, but that was okay, I had enough time with her. And I have never called off or anything like that, I always showed up on work on time. And the day after I had called off to spend one more day with my dog before I had put her down, I came in the next day to work reception. I didn't talk about it, I just did my job and then I went home. The next day, about twenty-four to forty-eight hours after I put my dog down that I have adopted from them, I cleaned out her kennel. And as anybody, they would cry and be upset and mourn the loss of their best friend. I then went up back to reception as I was scheduled to do and I was a complete mess and I, at the time, the other receptionist said, "You cannot work up here like this and I'm sorry." And I said, "Okay, that's fine, but I'm not scheduled in dogs today and I don't think that I could be able to do that either with my emotional stability falling apart." She said, "Well, why don't you go ask Darren Biggs? Let's, let's go ask him if you can go home early, you've never really showed up late and why not?" I walked into Darren Biggs' office and I said, "Darren, I'm sorry, but I can't, I can't work out the rest of the day in reception." And the reception brought me up here and told me to ask you if I can go home. He looked me dead in the eye and said, "I'm sorry, Claire, I'm sorry that your dog died. It's already been a day, can't you just get over it?" And as I cried even harder, I was being yelled at in the middle of his office, he then looked at me and said, "How about you just get out of my face?" And I went home that day. About two hours later, he then texted me and said, "I'm sorry, I don't grieve like other people." And that was it. I then returned to work for about two more months to see if I could continue doing this. And at that point, another one of the staff that was higher up than me, she was the dog coordinator and Toni had just hired her in. She had a long history of harassing and behind-the-scenes harassing, texting through work group chats, Facebook, our personal phone numbers. And Toni and Darren were much aware of this and even sitting in the back, a few of my colleagues have been harassed by the same person. Toni then gave her a promotion and she continued to harass me as I sent pictures, text messages, everything I could to prove to Darren and Toni that this woman was behind the scenes harassing us and making us quit our lovely jobs. They basically shrugged their shoulders and said, "We'll work on it," and nothing came upon it. She still works there to this day and harasses a lot of other people continuously. I could go on about as many more examples as I could, but I won't take up your time and I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
I'll just finish. We just feel that this needs to be brought to your attention, the cruelty that goes on behind those doors in that shelter. You all may think that Toni Bianchi is doing a great job, she's not. And all the hard work that she gets praises for in the last six years, people like us. She sits at her desk and screams and yells at everybody. She doesn't do anything. She is a certified dog trainer. I got, I had to do a behavioral assessment on a dog. Not my job, I work in the medical part. I was there for ten years and I was crumpled up and thrown in the garbage like a piece of trash. There are a lot of bad things going on at that animal shelter right now, at the hands of Toni. I would not be here today if I wasn't concerned. While I was there, I wanted to keep my job and we were all there and we could watch over things and make sure everything got done smoothly. We're not there anymore. It's a very scary place, that shelter, very scary. And I really wish that you would take into consideration of who is running that shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Next? And with that, this board stands in recess.